Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to the Village of Little Falls Planning Board Meeting of June 17th, 2014. My name's Maurice Sutton, and I'm the Chair of the Village Planning Board. With us tonight are members Rich Stephens, Michael Zeller, Liz Harshel, and John Litten. Our attorney is George Rodenhausen. And our Director of Planning Brenda White is here. There's more to her title, but... And our secretary is watching us on TV, I'm sure. Rogan Rose O'Donnell had an encounter with a deer. Okay, so, our agenda this evening, is it in the packet?
We're hoping we have an encounter with a whole bunch of deer.
Yes, we are very dear. We are.
Oh yeah, debt of gratitude to George. You helped when I was working on the plot of Rock and Snow.
Right. About fifteen, what year was it?
It was like 1999.
Fifteen years ago, yeah.
It worked out very well.
How do you see that? Does that help expand it?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else need an agenda packet? I do. Tom, do you need one?
Thank you.
Rich, you have one?
I got one.
Actually, Tom, we don't.
Don't worry about a big share.
I'm not worried. Okay, so on the agenda this evening is one application. And that is what we call PB 1401. It is, the applicant is Rock and Snow, 28 Main Street, and they want to construct an annex on their property. And it's a site plan with new buildings. It's in the Gateway District. And I see in the... The applicants are here, why don't you pull up a chair, a comfy chair. Try to give your thoughts.
We wanted to get asked.
Yes, I appreciate it. Okay. Regale us with your plans. What do you hope to do?
Well, we currently have a Rock and Snow building that my wife and I own. And we're also renting a house, the bottom floor of a house, on South Chestnut. And it rents very high, and it's very small. But we've had it now for over a year, and that was good proof to us that the idea would be successful of selling, you know, goods through there of different sort of flavors. Used things, discontinued stuff, scrap samples. And we just needed more space. We were running out of space at Rock and Snow. And I felt that although it would probably be financially wiser to build a big Rock and Snow on the current site, A, it would need a ZBA. It would not conform. And B, I didn't think it would really fit to make it the size it needed to be. But having two separate, A, not being much of a businessman, if one does go south, it's easier to, you know, continue in one. There are a lot of horror stories. This has taken so long for a number of reasons. One is that many of my friends in the industry have always been like this about growing. They've seen so many outdoor stores that became chains and then became gone. And that continues to this day. But after, you know, careful consideration and showing them again what our idea was, some of my close business confidants, I respect more than my own opinion on these things, said they gave me the green light. And I also, the new Rock and Snow building, the current building, was a joint effort. But I don't feel that I contributed as much as I will have contributed on this new project. And I believe in leaving that kind of legacy, and it also will help in my retirement. I'm 62 now, and this is a little late to get started on something like that. And thank you. You look pretty young. Can we pat each other on the back now and talk about...
Yeah.
So, you know, it's a good thing for our future. My manager's interested in buying the business. It's just, it's a good thing. It's a nice thing. And I've had this parking lot for a long time, and I've seen the taxes, you know, double in one year. You know, that's incentive. And it's seen a lot of abuse at parking lot. It's seen a lot of investment, paving and all kinds of things, and resealing. So it's time to put the grief part aside and have the, you know, the goodness come. So that's, if you want it back around, that's what it is. Now, the top floor is going to be just storage. We, right now, like all our skis, our rental skis and other skis, retail skis, they're in the manager's basement in Tilsen, Rosendale. So, you know, we've always been pressed for space, both storage and retail. So this will have a lot of storage upstairs. It'll make life a lot simpler. A lot of the decisions we make end up being very complex due to the space limitations. And when we do this, it'll, I think, give us a little more retail space in the current store, where we now do other things and have storage. We'll be able to turn that into some more retail space.
More aisle space?
Pardon?
More aisle space?
Ah, yes, it is tight, isn't it? Yes.
It's okay for rock climbers who are thin, but for people who hold the bottom of the...
You know, you're actually bringing up a very subtle retail point. It's, and it's a new Falsian point. It's that we do want it to be a handsome work on the one hand, but not quite, um... Not quite a boutique, you know?
Yeah.
This isn't Rhinebeck. And we don't want it, you know, on a certain level...
You didn't have any time.
You live there? Well, Rhinebeck's a very beautiful place. It's quite rarefied, you know? And so, you know...
Have a nice cinema.
Have a great cinema. Worth the trip.
Okay.
So that's the background.
Thank you very much. Very helpful. Any members have any comments or questions? Mr. Gottlieb.
Mrs. Lowell Deutschlander, he's the architect.
Lowell, what's the usable square footage on the second floor?
About 1200 square feet.
About 1200? And what's the height usually for that?
Six foot.
Six foot?
Six foot, please.
And it will not be retail, it will be just storage?
No, it will not. Just storage.
Any other question?
Any other ones? Someone points that George brought up. We haven't dealt much with the Gateway District.
Speak one second. Have you seen George's meeting? No, probably not. Do you have another printed copy of it? We've got this here.
Because it's in the Gateway District, I just mentioned that there's a whole set of standards that was adopted by the Village Board roughly 15 years ago. And 16 years ago. And that set of standards is to be applied by the planning board when reviewing a site plan. Did you know, I don't know what you do about this when you're doing your designs.
Well, we look at what is on the website, the code for the Gateway District.
But it's not on, it's not on the website, which is one of these things that needs to be changed.
Okay, so I went off what was on the...
Right, so some of those should be selected in the zone also.
Okay.
I think we adhere to much of this.
You do, but some of you don't, so...
For instance?
Well, the first one on the top there was the front yard setback of zero. Another was, it calls for it being at the sidewalk, the front of the building being at the sidewalk, like the rest of Main Street, or being consistent with the adjacent buildings, whatever that may be.
Well, the lawyers have set back. And everyone has voiced wanting to save this tree. So that is the primary reason we're doing this.
We also talked about the stone wall outside the front. It would be changing the stone wall because of the sidewalk.
And yes, also in my mind, having this transition from the parking lot, being able to walk diagonally across that. A lot of people park there and move through there.
Yeah, but people do already. Yeah, I think the plantings that you have, that you show, that you just provided to me, I would prefer to have it set back.
We went over that in the sketch plan.
Yeah, we did.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't have these at that point, but...
George, I'm a... The stuff on the gateway, is that a suggestive?
They're guidelines.
They're guidelines, yeah.
That's why it's a guideline.
It specifically says that these are additional regulations.
It does?
On Water Page Two, yes.
I have a quote there that "Development standards are adopted by the Village Board to serve as a basis for legally binding requirements in the village's zoning ordinance." I read that to mean that this is the basis for the zoning law. And so that you can legally bind it in the zoning law. But you notice a lot of these say should, and typically should means if you can, or there's some level of discretion with the board. I would read it that way. Although there is a particular provision in the zoning law in this that the setback should be zero. We're consistent with prevailing setbacks. If there's another setback in the street that is a little bit far back.
Yeah, so he would mean it under consistent with the others.
Right, you could be consistent with other setbacks on the street.
And I think Richie...
And it also has this architectural feature of the stone wall. Which when we did, when we had the sketch plan, like, we talked about that as being an integral part of the lot. So I don't think we're going to lose that. So that makes a zero lot line, front lot line near impossible.
Yeah.
That's why I was asking, I read this, the gateway as being guided. This is where we're looking to go with zoning. But when I read Bren's, no, it was a little bit more...
Get the rule, boys! Also, I'm very enamored with Water Street. And even right in the front there, there's a bit of a setback. And I think there might be a table there, and then the guy with the hot dogs there. And people gather, and that's one of the things as a community that we should relish. And I think, if you notice in our drawing...
Hot dogs and relish.
I'm a vegetarian, and I just...
Me too, but I miss hot dogs and relish.
So if you notice in the color rendering, there's a kiosk like we see at the preserve. And I was envisioning one side being for the preserve, one side being for maybe Cina Cutson, one side being for slab sides, you know, not for concerts or this or that, but for the outdoor resources in our region. So as a gathering point, again, to encourage community, we don't seem to really have a park other than right here, which is not really in the village exactly. So I was hoping to emulate a little of that, although most of it, again, stemmed from, "Save the tree, please." So there we are. I mean, the original plan was to put the building way back to save both trees. But then, you know, business-wise, that would be terrible. And, you know, you all said, "Can't do that." So brought it as far forward as we could to still save the tree.
What's the tree?
Outside the canopy. So it's the biggest maple probably on Main Street.
I mean, I think it's good for a couple of reasons. There is, as Lowell pointed out, there's the parking lot, which exists already, and there's an obvious path, that one path that takes you to the sidewalk and takes you right into the shops on that part of Main Street. And to lose that, I think, would be a mistake. And it also creates this kind of massing along that section of Main Street, where not all the buildings create a uniform face, but there is some fluctuation as to where they are. And none of them are set so far back that they seem to affirm it, so...
This also gives handicapped access to the sidewalk. Otherwise, there are steps.
The sidewalk drops, so...
So it's sloped?
As you go west, it immediately starts to slump down.
It's one to 20.
It goes down there.
So it's from east to west?
Yeah.
So as I say, most of my points were, you know, somewhat addressed in George's memorandum. And I brought up the second floor only because we're supposed to consider that in the parking. Even though it is only storage, it's still...
Considered retail.
Considered retail space.
Because actually warehousing is not allowed in the district.
But you've got so much parking here.
This is the material you're going to sell downstairs. You have it upstairs or in your store.
Well, that's good. I've wanted enough parking, believe me. Parking is, to me, if I didn't have enough parking, I could not, could not or would not proceed with this.
Does your plan, I'm sorry, could I...
Yours doesn't have parking, is there, even if you can?
Even if you can, it's upstairs, yes. Yeah, you're all right. It's just we're supposed to note on the plan, the upstairs square footage.
Okay.
This plan doesn't alter the current existing configuration of the parking lot, right? You don't lose spaces or do you have...
Uh, I think we lose five or six. Five or six.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there's no lines on the lot right now, so it's debatable how many we actually lose, but yeah, it's a... As you can see, we're only going back, you know, 10 or 15 feet from where the grass is ending already.
Okay.
Since our building will be there during business hours, I would hope to gain quite a few spaces. Because when I walk outside or go for dinner and come back for a slideshow and I can't find a parking spot and then realize they're not all in Rock and Snow, I feel like an absentee landlord in a way. It becomes just public parking. We might be able to control that to a certain degree by occupying some of that lot.
So there are a number of landscaping requirements for the parking lot, which are actually in the zoning law. Buffer, and then there's some that are in the design standards that are maybe the more guidelines about breaking up the parking. This is existing parking lots, so maybe that makes a difference, I don't know. But Bren, actually, you had in your notes about the need to do something to break it up.
Yes. The development standards for this district talk about having a buffer along the street.
Easy, huh? Sure.
And they suggest 10% of the landscaping, 10% of the current lot. So that wasn't specifically, I mean, I know you have some landscaping, especially what we saw today, so make it cover that already.
Well, isn't there a tree line between, on the property line between you and the other parking lot? Where it's not really showing those trees very clearly? Um, well, yeah, there they are. There are existing trees along the west edge of the parking lot. The dots don't really show relative, the relative sizes of the trees, but they're there.
So if you're, is it... Is there nothing we need on the site plan, by the way? Even the trees you're going to take down?
Yes, well, we do have a...
That's not on the original?
I think we have a more recent site plan that does have plantings on it.
So what's the date of the site plan we should be looking at?
Maybe I got it wrong, sir. There's existing conditions mapped in the site plan.
Do you have two seconds for the site plan?
So existing conditions, it does show the tree that's there. So 10%, if the guidelines are 10% the parking lot needs to be landscaping, how do we define that? Is that in terms of the paved area that's already there or in terms of the site? So does that mean that like if we have, let's say, 2,000 square feet of parking lot, that we have to have 200 feet of landscaping within that or outside of it?
No, no, I would think it was the boundaries of the lot. There's already grass and trees.
I don't have the development standards in front of me. I thought that it was a minimum of 10% landscaping. Well, I put on the lot, so you would be right, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably one of the shades of the village.
Yeah, it's got a lot of...
It's got a lot of trees on it.
Well, that's after midnight. I have nothing to do with that.
Well, that's true, too.
The other kind of shade. I get very defensive about all the things I find in that parking lot.
So I don't see the trees on the site plan.
So on the existing conditions, it's just, they're tiny little dots.
Yeah, there's the dots that are on the existing conditions, and it marks them out pretty well. I live just down Wertz Avenue, and there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of trees, and there's a bush that is against, fenced from Wertz Avenue, going over towards the Stone Monument.
I count five trees that are shown on the property.
And existing conditions?
Yes. That are shown on the, that's joint property law.
Right, no, we have it.
There's these dots on there.
Is that them?
It's these, correct.
Oh, those guys, yeah. There's one.
Oh, okay.
So none of those are, nothing's happening with any of those.
But does that count towards the required 10%? Bren?
Yes.
Would that count towards their required 10%? Even though it's existing, or do they have to add 10%?
No.
It's part of the 10%.
Yes.
And that's 10%, that would be 200 square feet of...
Well, I mean, this is not 2,000 square feet. I'm just pulling a number out of the air.
But I, I still am unclear about this. Is it 10% of the parking area after they build the building or before they build the building? The pre-existing conditions or...
I believe what it says is because you're over 20 parking spaces, and we know we're going to be over 20 parking spaces, then you require 10%. So it doesn't actually mean 10% of the parking. It's saying 10% of the lot plus the amount of parking.
Okay, of the whole lot.
Yes.
Regardless of whether a building has taken that or not.
No.
I doubt that. I doubt that because then we're talking about the building and the parking lot. If the requirement is, and I'm not even sure it's a requirement, I'm not sure it's not a recommendation. If the, let's say it's a requirement. If the requirement is that it's 10% of the parking lot, then the building, having used up X amount of the parking lot, can be counted as the parking lot. It could only be 10% of the parking lot, not the whole lot.
You speak with great reason, which doesn't always coincide with our code.
With our code.
What is the, I'm fully appreciative of the sometimes inconclusive character of the code.
I would say often. More than some.
Well, some in logic means any category in which there is at least one is...
I would say if we have any discretion here, it would make more sense to...
I would likely believe that.
What is the lot density in the Gateway Zone?
There's a lot. I think it's like 100%.
Well, it's 100%. Then how come you have to have 10% of it be...
Of the parking.
If you have parking, it depends on how many spaces you have. If you have 20...
So if I put 100% of the lot in building, I don't have to have 10%.
Right.
If you have to. I have a roof guard.
If you go to blacktop there, you have to have that speaking.
Right.
That makes some sense. Doesn't it?
Somewhere it makes sense. I mean, my feeling is that we got blacktop, we got permeable surface, same as you've got a building. The same as a building. Yeah, the same design, but, you know, it's an impermeable surface.
I think the purchase was aesthetics. Gateway has a lot of architectural standards, and the idea was to make sure that it was, as you came into the village, that what you were seeing was an area that was attractive. And so if you have a large, open parking area, then that's the decision.
So whatever green spaces he has in front of the building and around the building, across the back is all going to win us 10%.
So may I just, hang on for one second. I neglected to mention that the purpose of this meeting really is to determine if the application's complete before we send it to the county and have a public hearing. However, I find this to be very instructive, and it might be good to get some of these issues out. And perhaps an amendment to the plan or something like that. But the real, why you're here is so that you can present your plan to us. We can then vote that the application is complete, which means that we can then send it to the county for their approval. And when that comes back, we can have a public hearing when all these issues come. But I think in order to expedite the process, it's good to vet some of these things now or expose them. If we have to make some adjustments before either submission to the county or public hearing, that would be good. So even though normally what we would be doing now is just saying, "Yeah, everything's right here. We really want to get to know this well enough and air as many of the possible pitfalls now rather than later."
I can, George, I'm sorry.
Well, I just had a suggestion, an idea for the board that we give this development standards set. Do you have it now, this document?
We don't have it.
We don't have it.
I just...
We give it to you because you might want to read this and think about whether you want to do any of this. This talk, as Brett was saying, this talks about breaking up the paved area. And they say with planters, with the design, it shows it, the design of how... It's not the surrounding because there's another section on buffers. But, so we're talking about the buffer technically. They're talking about breaking up continual parking with planters. And if you have over 20 spaces, at least 10% of the interior, of the act grade parking lot, 10% should be used for landscaping. And traditionally, the way that's done, and I've seen that standard in a lot of zoning, it's traditionally you take the areas of the lot, the parking lot, not the tax lot, and you take 10%, and that adds up to a number. And then you can add up all the bill spaces that you put in this landscaping throughout the lot. It's a traditional concept that's been big for 20, 30 years to break up parking lots. And that's, it says here, "Interperse the paved areas of large parking lots with landscape views containing trees, natural growing materials. Parking lot landscaping can break up large expanses of parking, soften the appearance of paved surfaces, and provide shade for pedestrians and vehicles."
Now, I think this is aimed more at a ShopRite parking lot, which is a massive blacktop with nothing breaking it up, where you have existing trees and other landscaping. I think that should certainly...
There's a big bush up front, there are a couple of trees. Trees on the side, there are trees in the back.
And this is a little bit natural.
As a landscaper, she's going to want to do stuff. We have ornamental grasses on the side. One thing I did want to bring up about that possible idea is that I, that was on a piece of paper, is I think it's a very bad idea. Because no matter what we do, this is impulsive. And we used to have planters barrels cut, and that didn't last very long. Everything gets dug up and ripped up. If it's not a tree, if it's not a durable living thing, it is a gone or killed living thing. So that's one of the negatives about planters is that the plants are replaced with deer cables and lobbys.
I mean, this blacktop is so intrusive, I didn't even realize it was there the last time we were talking. It goes through the stone wall and the bushes and the trees.
Well, the building takes up part of it, too. Wood would take up part of it, so it doesn't seem as much. So the other one is the buffer that Bren was talking about, the buffer from the public road. Screen parking lots, where they must front on a public right of way. Screen parking lots, where they must front on a public right of way. Landscaping could be an effective way to screen parking in paved areas from view and soften the appearance. So that's another suggestion.
We could do something right in the front. You know, there's a sort of a grass island, other than the steps, runs all the way around along the front. My only thing there is, I'd have to get my wife to figure out something that doesn't grow high, because there have been bad things that have happened in that lot. And I don't want to screen it for the bad people. You know, we have lighting, but if lighting, if you can't really see what's being lit, that could be a problem at two in the morning. So I want to make sure that this is not, just not add too much privacy.
Again, there's an illustration along the lines, you're discussing it fairly low level, but some...
Shrubs, yeah, shrubs and trees, yeah.
Yeah, shrubs.
We'd love to do that.
So...
That looks, that looks very terrible.
You mentioned lighting, lighting isn't here, too, that the lighting isn't up. Have any glare coming out?
All right.
I don't know what the lighting plan is, but is that on the site plan?
There's something from your plan here.
Why don't you take over?
You can see what they look like on the elevation. So they have, it's an LED fixture inside of this housing. And the fixture itself is not a light bulb, you know, it's up in there. And then there is a sealed frosted glass thing that comes down, like what you see in a factory, like with the cast cage around it, just kind of for the aesthetic appeal. And not only is that frosted, but looking, there's not a bulb. So that, that light fixture is fully shielded inside of that.
So they're full cutoff?
Mm-hmm. And then the ones on the, under the eaves, there's on this side, where Mark B., there's going to be five LED fixtures underneath that eave. But those are just socket lights facing down, and they're recessed, so you won't see those from the room.
Is there anything in the parking lot? Any pre-standing lights in the parking lot?
Yes, there are existing. There are two over here. We look, there's lamp posts, and there's two lamp posts here, and they provide a lot of light. In my experience, at night, they had a parking lot extremely well lit, so they didn't think it was necessarily good anymore. And there's also a light on the back of the building over the back door. And all of these are...
It's a fairly big light at the west block, too. It shines into the hall.
So all these are two thousand lumens, but they're dimble. So is it set at anything?
From what I've seen at the county planning board, for parking lots, they would like to see a lighting plan to show, not necessarily, as it's called, luminescience, but not necessarily to that great extent, but to show that the lot is lit, that the whole lot is lit. And it doesn't have to be as detailed as it would be for, for a new parking lot. This, I would like to preserve, I think you should, you must preserve the existing trees and landscaping. I think that's a great value to the, to the village. And, but still, you would want to have it to be a safe parking lot for everybody.
Yes, absolutely.
So just if you could indicate where the lights are and what kind of lights they are, the county's very interested.
Existing lights?
Yeah, yeah. They certainly have to be full cutoff, that's, that has to be, even if it's existing. It may have to be made to be full cutoffs.
Unfortunately, I think one of them, or two of them, are not on our property. But they, they come over, the light does, but the posts, and we don't pay for it.
Well, if they're not yours, if they're not yours and not your property, then it's not part of your deal. So you don't have to worry about that.
But it does show light.
Yeah.
So we'll need to show that.
Well, here's the thing, you don't have control over those lights. Whoever owns them can take them out at some point. So I think there has to be some, Bren, what do you think about that? I think there has to be some provision for you being in control of the lighting. And I don't know where I've seen what the specifics, specific requirements for lighting are for a parking lot like this. Do you know anything about this, Bren?
No.
Nothing specific here.
Yeah, there probably isn't anything specific. If I can find...
It could be a caveat that says if they ever are removed or cease functioning, that we then, because this would be very redundant.
It would, very, very redundant.
Yeah, because we need lighting on this side, which is where it is.
Right. Well, let's leave it like that and see if they make, the worst case is, they will make comments, which could be mandatory required changes. It could be suggested changes. It could be that they'll say it had no county impact, it's all right. Even though it's on a state road, they could say, you know, all right, no big deal. But they, they often make good suggestions, especially if the plans are complete enough that they can answer questions.
Here's the, uh...
A nice mystery document.
That's the copy of the mystery document?
You look on the, it's upstairs.
It's in effect.
Yes, understood, understood, very good.
I mean, additional...
In the back corner here.
Yeah, I think we should each have one. And it'd be great to make it in a PDF.
I'd like to put it in the book, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I got it as a PDF.
I don't suppose we have like the original Word text copy of it. It'd be great to make a scan of it. Okay.
And what question?
Okay, that's enough, thank you.
Can I have any more?
Yeah.
Just a few more little things. Sign, usually the sign is done as part of the site plan. If you have the sign, so...
Yeah, we have a sign on the building.
Hang on for a moment.
The building here.
I thought there was a pre-standing sign on the plan.
You're here in the kiosk? I don't still know how we're going to handle the kiosk.
So it's not a pre-standing sign?
Not a pre-standing.
Oh, yeah, it's put on there as a pre-standing sign.
Something private. I like it.
But it's, if you, it is on here, the pre-standing sign, but when it's in the county, it's going to change. That's a full recite, but it's on the building, here above this front window, and you can see it on the render.
That comes on the floor plan, yeah.
And it is.
I'm sorry, could you point?
Sign's here, hanging above that window.
Oh, I see.
And then it's here, as you can see, right above the floor plan.
That's an understated sign.
Well, it's sort of large.
And it will say, you know, it won't just be blank, like it is.
There it is.
I see.
It's our logo without the words.
Very funny.
So you'll, like the landscape plan, the sign, these things need to be just noted on the plan somehow. So, so when the board approves it...
On the site plan?
On the site plan, so that when the board approves it, it's pretty much approved.
Okay.
With square footage of the, of the sign?
Yeah, how big the sign is. It helps to have a drawing of the sign, the face of the sign, so...
I could have brought the sign in.
Okay.
It was stolen, it was outside the annex. It was stolen, and I had to pay a ransom to get it back, stolen back to the planters. It was a thousand dollar sign that I got from PDQ. Made it up, had it made up, and it was stolen. And then I went to the police, and they weren't able to do anything. And then I mentioned it to Big Rick. And Big Rick said, what'd you go to the police for? I'll find out who has your sign, but it might cost you. And it ended up, I had to pay finder's fee and then pay the thief to get the sign back. And it was damaged somewhat, but we have it. And that was a terrible thing. And then we put up just a banner temporarily, which until the new building goes up. And somebody spray painted on the banner, they took the R. and went over it and made a C.
Yeah.
I don't understand, I don't know. Strange, stranger than fiction.
Such a creative community.
So the square footage for the planting and the sign, everything needs to be marked down here? It can't be on the floor plan?
Right.
Okay.
The site plan is the thing that we will stamp and approve and be recorded.
They don't normally approve a floor plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good information, but it has to, what they approve has to be in the site plan.
Okay. I'll have it all on there.
As far as I'm looking at this thing, we got a complete application.
Except that the plan needs to be revised in a number of ways.
Yeah, but that can go on over time.
It can't go, can't go at the same, same time. It may help with the county to have more information on the site.
It will definitely help with the county.
And it will, it will be there.
So just to go over my list, I have the, put the sign on the site plan. Describe your landscaping, if it's trees, make it clear there are trees, you know, whatever that is.
As in the pre-existing?
It doesn't matter.
Pre-existing and whatever you add, yes.
It doesn't matter, yeah, whatever trees end up.
Whatever you can end up with, yeah.
Yeah, they're not approving the existing conditions, they're approving the site plan. The need to show lights on the site plan. The, include the upstairs square footage, so you have a chart of square footage, so you can use the chart to calculate the parking. So the landscaping in the front, this is the buffer, you were describing some landscape that you and your wife may work out, but just work it out and put it on the plan, so it's clear what it is.
George, may I have clarification of what you said earlier about you can't have warehouse space or something like that?
A pure warehouse is not a pure use in the gateway.
Right, but this isn't a pure warehouse.
Right.
And it's ancillary to their business, right? So is there any problem with?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
But it's just a parking calculation.
No, just...
It is part of the parking.
It's considered retail space. It's the storage of space, of stored material to come downstairs and be sold. That's why it's not a warehouse, in my mind.
No, I understand that, but what I don't understand is why that has to impact the parking calculation, since it's not going to have any effect on occupancy or, you know what I mean?
Because in the future, you could change the use from storage to actual sales floor.
That's what I think.
And since you've got the bigger mark...
They still have the marketing, either way.
Right. Which are you, uh...
Oh, hello.
Okay, I have just one point.
Yes, sir.
Um, there seems to be an internal disagreement, according to George's memo, if I read this right. There is no special use permit should be required. But the building inspector noticed a determination back, I'm not sure it's not dated, says after reviewing the proposed project, that determined change of use to the property and new proposed use will require site plan and special use permit review.
I called Mark about that, and he didn't have any reason to say it. I mean, he just thought that when it had site plan, it would need special...
So you can agree it doesn't?
It doesn't.
Okay, all right.
He can't say he agreed, he just didn't have any, he couldn't point to any reason for it. Yeah, we can agree.
We can agree. Okay.
Is that all right, Bren?
Sounds good.
All right. Thanks.
Liz? Got it.
Any other...
Yes, I do have a couple of comments about the, I had already brought it up to, before. Is that on the, both the existing conditions and the proposed, I guess it's easier to see on the existing conditions sheet, there's a six inch PVC pipe that comes into existing catch basin number one. And it's only, it's a little less than two feet below the top of grate of catch basin number one. And I'm not sure where that is coming from. And once you build the building, will that cause issues to whatever that six inch pipe is draining? And Rick said that he was going to look into where that comes from, because I already had brought it to his attention prior to the official part of the meeting, because I was curious if he knew where, what it was for. And I'm just concerned that drainage, whatever that is draining, would then be blocked. Or might possibly be blocked. And the other, but on the other hand, the other drainage that is presently causing icing issues in the wintertime in front of the next door restaurant and on Main Street will be fixed by the cat, the proposed catch basins that he has in back of the building and in the parking lot. So that's a good thing. I was just wondering what that six inch PVC pipe does. What, where is it coming from? What is it draining?
I don't know.
Well, next time it pours, we will go out and see if anything is coming from that pipe.
Yeah, because the buildings next door all drain off the back and flow around the side here and then out, and it makes a lot of ice. So we're not, we'll go look into it and see where it comes from, but it's currently doesn't...
And that was the only, only question that I had that had not been answered previous to...
There's still one?
No, I think it's...
Okay.
Is there any less, is there any tree or landscaping in the back?
No, that's the proposed one.
Along the back property line?
There are trees there now.
No, it's not PVC.
It's an area that does need some attention.
From where is it?
There's three on our property, and there's more on the neighbors' properties, which are not shown on here.
Are they residential?
Exactly.
Yes, this is residential, this is not, so...
So yeah, there's a requirement for a buffer between commercial and residential. But you may already have a buffer there.
There already is a buffer.
So you could show it on the plan.
Actually, I'm looking at this, and they're both B1.
Are there zone B1?
Yeah, right here. So there's the...
It's sort of right at the edge of this, yep.
There's this little corner right here, which this looks like from this lot, which says, now from ours, Julia, is residential, but we only abut it in this twelve foot area. And there's three trees on their property right there. So again, just show them, like... Okay.
Bren, are there any things in your memo or on your mind that haven't been addressed?
I have lots.
I don't think, in order to make this complete application, no.
Okay. Are there any of the things they should know about that may be issues for...
I think we've covered everything, and I think the fact that they now have the development standards now.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. So may I have a motion to determine this application to be complete?
So moved.
Wait a minute, that's...
Was that you?
You got it.
Can I prompt it? Are you kidding? Is this that, uh...
Yeah.
Is that legal? Okay, thank you, Mr. Zerler. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stefan.
I know you want to do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the application is complete. Now, we will have a motion to, let's see, let me just count, excuse me for a moment.
You got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so today, the seventeenth, we have enough time to submit this to the county for their next meeting, which will be on Wednesday, July 2nd.
As long as we can get you the revised site plan by...
Well, I think it has to be there in ten, ten days before the meeting. If it's, for an application of this size, I think they would want that. I can call them tomorrow, normally our secretary would do this. I can call them tomorrow to see what, what the latest would be. Do you have a rough idea how much time you would need to...
What you guys talked about, I could do it tomorrow.
What, okay.
Just what, you know, what was mentioned is not, nothing is big.
So let's, let's go back then, so that would be, let's say, the eighteenth. So let's say we have it on the nineteenth, and that's two weeks, so that's okay, that's fine. So that means that we will submit it, and we have to submit it by mail. Yeah, let's, let's say these words out loud, what we need is to have on the site plan...
Pen, please? Sorry, the grievous evidence is not...
That's all right. George, you have a little bit of the ask, or...
Yeah, it turns to the, we have, on landscaping, show of landscaping, so...
Existence and...
Yeah, whatever you're going to end up with. So in the front, you have landscaping to buffer the parking area. On the sides, you have trees. In the back, you have some landscaping. You just need to show that. You already showed some of that building, but you need to show the rest of it. Number two, you need to include the upstairs square footage, as part of the gross, gross floor area, by the way. Gross floor area maybe more than six foot height, but probably not a issue.
Sign, the size and the appearance?
The sign, which is to show where it is and show the, show the face.
Location and.
And the dimensions.
Dimensions, yeah. Height off the ground.
Show the lights, the lights on the site plan, I think you should show the off-site lights, just to show there is light.
Okay.
Even though it's not.
Yeah, they're on, okay, they're on the existing one.
Because otherwise the county's going to ask for lighting. Sign. You're going to resolve where the HDBE pipe drains, drains.
I don't think they can.
Hold on, if it doesn't rain sizably.
I think that's it.
Okay.
And what about this back a little bit? We need to mark that on the plan, just say.
Yeah, the landscaping plan will show that.
Just that that's screening, even though it's not on our.
You're just going to show something there.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're going to show trees.
Gotcha.
Show the existing?
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't have to be new.
Okay, so we'll send it to the county, they will meet on the second of July, we will have their response by the eighth of July, so we can schedule a public hearing for our July fifteenth meeting. So may I have a motion to set a public hearing for this item for July fifteenth, two thousand fourteen? I have Mr. Stephens, Mr. Zerler, second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, are we forgetting anything?
Well, we have the EAF, we can do secret now.
Okay, let's do that.
EAF, I feel like it was in good shape.
Yeah.
Spitfire was my favorite plane. Spitfire was my favorite plane.
Really?
Wait, oh, that's the RAF, never mind.
See, mustn't anyone make, they try to make bad jokes.
Are you a pilot?
No. I built too many models when I was a child.
Me too.
I'm still a child, past the sad part. I don't build models anymore, like, some things just don't look.
I've moved it twice already.
You have what?
I have a nineteen forty-seven Aranca Champ airplane, I've moved it twice already.
Wow.
A model or a real?
No, no, the airplane.
The real one?
Oh, real airplane.
What kind is it?
Nineteen forty-seven Aranca.
Aranca?
Maybe a trainer plane.
Wow. What a guy.
I think with a house I bought once. I've moved it twice.
Okay.
My junk being, people want to dump it like.
On a wing and a mortgage.
And a friend.
Okay, so we're going to determine the impact of this project. So will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? So, no pecking. So this, we do have some standards, some guidelines in the gateway, what's it called?
Gateway District.
Gateway District, I don't know what you call that, what's the guideline, what's the?
Gateway District Development Standard.
We do have those, the material conflicts.
Okay, just resolve.
Okay, good. Thank you. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land? It's a change of use?
Yeah, small to not.
There'll be less intensity in terms of.
It's, it's a small use, okay. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of existing community? I'd say no. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in the adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure of mass transit biking or walkway? I did see a bike rack on there, yeah.
I'm sure that goes.
Okay, adverse change in existing level of traffic, I'd say no. If anybody has any opinions of these, why will I say something you can?
You don't, Brian.
Thank you. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Increase in use of energy, it's going to cost some new energy. Small, I would say, yes, okay. Thank you, Mike. The proposed action, impact existing public or private water suppliers or waste water treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Practically, deserve some. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands water by its groundwater air quality, flora, fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in increase in the potential for erosion flooding or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Do we consider falling off a rock face a hazard to human health?
Only my doctor is not for sure.
Okay, so this appears that this is a med deck. Is that what you're saying? Okay, so we have determined that this is not, so I'm going to check the box that says, based on the information analysis of blah blah, this board documentation, proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
They give a motion to that effect.
Yes, so may I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm waiting for checking this box before asking you to thank you for the second job. Fall in favor?
Aye.
You're too late, Mr. Zerler.
I know.
Then why'd you do it?
I don't know. I'll get back to you.
All right, thank you. Have your people come over?
So the special use permit application supplement is not applicable, correct?
Correct.
Bike rack, yes.
It's on here, we'll put it on there, it's right.
It'll be four spaces.
Four?
It needs one per ten apartment.
Okay.
Ah, so that goes on the site plan?
Yeah.
I thought it was on the site plan, no?
No, this doesn't mean we haven't missed something else, between now and sometime ago.
Well.
You know, we all want the right thing, so that's, there's not going to be any problems.
And they know what's in the closet.
They know what's in it's great, how's that? Is everybody happy?
Okay, I think we are done with Mr. Batley's project. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Good to finally meet you.
Very excited.
Good to see you again.
George.
Fifteen years.
Coke or crock? I'll hold you to it.
All right, George, I would like you to stay for a bit, because there are some things that I want to talk about. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and we, and can you use this updated?
You'll give that to the building department, and we'll be on the lookout for it, and we will repackage it for submission to the county.
Okay, files and hard copy?
Yes, please. And.
Thank you very much, Brenda.
Yeah, we will need the PDF.
Um, yes, this would be cool, this would take, this is ours? Yeah, that's ours.
The PDF of the revised site plan isn't necessary for the county, but we would like it whenever you produce it.
Okay, yeah, we'll do it, it's, yeah, that's easy.
And I guess you know how many copies we need, how many hard copies?
Ten, ten.
That's okay.
Is your office local?
No, I'm, I'm just starting out, so yes.
Oh, no? Well, it's great.
Okay.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
I started that one.
Thank you.
I grew up here, a long time ago. Well, thank you very much.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Thank you very much.
Brent, I would like to give this to you to give to Brogan, it's the sign, EAF.
Do you want the rest of it?
I'll have another copy of it when I, at some point, I don't need it now, thank you. Okay, so we have some minutes to, 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 we have some draft minutes. May I have a motion to accept?
I got one little thing.
Yes, go ahead, please.
It says the downtown parking policy conducted by the village.
Policy?
Yeah, right. Should be, study, it should be that.
Yes, sorry, I missed that, okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stephens, any other comments or corrections? May I have a motion to adopt the draft planning board minutes with Mr. Stephens' correction?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. One abstention?
Okay, thank you, Liz. Okay, so I started to draft an email to everybody, and I never got very far with it, but it started when I was at the county plan board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was announced that County Executive Heim signed an executive order requiring all county facilities to purchase one hundred percent of their electricity from renewable sources. Now, they do it with credits, certificates, I forgot what it's called, but still, I think it's a cool thing. They're not going to be putting turbines on the roof or solar panels, but it, it reminded me of a conversation we've had many times about what can we do to make our village and therefore the world slightly greener. And as, as I wrote to you a couple of months ago, I think, when, when the town's wetlands law was survived in appeal, and there's a second appeal, or they have another?
Yes, for leave to appeal to the court appeals, that's pending.
Okay, but anyhow, it appears that the odds are good that the town wetlands law will have survived the challenges that have been made against it, mostly by people who would like to build or develop certain lands. But I, I asked the question, what can we do in the village to leverage the amount of work that the town has done to create this law that seems to be able to survive challenges? As you probably know, the town's laws, I think, was it twice had overturned?
Yes.
So it's, it's not easy. It isn't easy to develop something that will offer the protection that we would like and, and be able to withstand the challenges that, that developers might, might make. So I asked for a roadmap, and I don't remember what you sent me, George, I'm sorry, can you explain briefly what would be necessary for us to do this?
Keep in mind that the town effort went back to two thousand seven, but current law, developed it for about a four-year period, adopted in two thousand eleven, and it was based on a survey of wetlands that was done by De Lauser and then subsequently by Spider Barber, dated, I think, two thousand five. So one thing is there needs to be some updating of that material, and I don't even know if it dealt with the village very effectively. So to the extent that the village want to do this, they would have to engage someone to update and build in whatever is missing from that map, that's, that's the most important thing. Because the issue in the court case, primary issue was whether or not the town did a good enough job mapping all the wetlands that were going to be regulated, and, and our defense was that the town's wetland map is as good as any other wetland map in the state, including DEC's wetland map, in fact, they used their maps as one of the inputs, and the court agreed with that. So the process has been directly, but I think now that those maps are pretty old, I'm not sure what was done in the village, it needs to look at that. But past that, you know, there are a lot of compromises made in it, going through the public hearing process and the comment period, I think the village would have to look at the whole law and say, is this what we want here? Does it fit with the village? Is it more than we need? One of the important features of the law that helped uphold it was that the town is providing a free wetlands inspection by the wetlands inspector, the town has a wetlands inspector, Spider Barber, I think still is the same person, even though the law has come and gone, he's always been there. And the court pointed that out, that although the wetland descriptions are very precise, people don't know whether there's a wetland on their land, so somebody with any authority can tell them. So the law provided that you could ask for and get a free inspection, a free determination by the town, that's an issue for the village, the village doesn't have a wetlands inspector, but I think, looking at that law, maybe adopting that, that's a very key component, a good map, have an inspector. And otherwise, the process is pretty straightforward, you know, proposed, public hearings, adopt, get sued, but maybe not get sued, because really, it's kind of like decided on this particular law. If this same law were adopted by any other town, I think the court would just say, sorry, this has been decided by the appellate division. If the Court of Appeals turns down, the request for appeal is final throughout all the districts that are in the third department, which is quite a lot of this area. So everything but the fourth, which is up in the west. So all of Ulster County and the surrounding areas are the third department, and that now is the law of that department, so. So again, if you pretty much stay close to this law, it's, it's not going to be overturned. But that's why.
Right, okay.
That's the summary of what we have to do.
So I'd like a sense of the board about whether they're interested in pursuing this, or think it's, it's an important thing for villagers to have, and I'd like your opinion too, right? So just to test to get an idea of what you're all thinking of, have any questions of George or?
So what you're proposing is that we put together a standard similar to the town's standard for wetlands?
Well, yeah, I'm proposing that we, we have a law that offers the protection to wetlands as yet perhaps undescribed, we don't know exactly where all the wetlands are. We have a pretty good idea, and had Sony did a survey, what was that, Michael?
Two thousand and four, uh, five, yeah.
And, and they delineated wetlands in the entire village, right?
They did, yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good basis anyhow. And whether it needs to be adjusted for changes, you know, whether they would do it, or De Lauser or somebody would do it, so we have an up-to-date map of where our wetlands are. But the effort is to preserve them and protect them, and mostly from the kind of changes that either development or other impacts from neighboring developments might make. So anyhow.
Just out of curiosity, if someone has a wetlands on their property, what sort of restrictions does that impose on their use of their property?
Well, the way the law works, you just have to get a permit, unless you're exempt, and there, as I mentioned, there's a lot of compromises made in the process of developing those certain meetings with public.
I'm not saying specifically on building something, but just, I mean, just in general.
The concept, the way it works is that if you're going to do something which is going to adversely affect the wetland, or also water course, this kind of, by the way, wetlands have water courses, but if you're going to do something that adversely impacts its function, then you have to get a permit, and the permit. And the permit might prohibit you to do it as long as you mitigate the impact. And, uh, and it has various levels of significance. If this is something really significant, it's gonna have serious adverse impact, you might get denied unless you create some benefit to the environment elsewhere, or create, or put money into a fund. That's the extreme case. At the other end, a lot of things are exempt, uh, like mowing your lawn, or taking care of existing conditions, and so on, so. It's a long list of exemptions for, for simple activities around the house. At the other end, there is the whole process of what if you have something really adverse, maybe contribute to the fund, or. In the end, the, the point of this whole structure is that they don't wanna deny you doing things, but they wanna make sure you protect the wetland where you can. And if for some reason you can't, then you do something that'll counteract it or offset it yet.
For example, there, there was a development in the last five or six years, it's now called The Ridge on Thirty-Two South.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they, to mitigate the wetlands that they ended up filling in?
Um, yeah, theirs was a little more complicated. They actually bought pieces of property that had filled wetlands. They were going to.
And they restored that.
Remedi- remediate those, supposedly construct some new wetlands.
Right.
But in the process, there would be other parts of the property that they would be filling. But they were also required to, the army court engineers required them to do two, I think, off-site, um, improvements to wetlands that are out of the, outside of the councils.
Yeah.
Yeah, the army court chose.
So anyhow, it's, it's a, it's, it's more than just our backyard, it's to, it's to, it's to preserve wetlands for biodiversity and general health of, of the area. So anyhow, I just wanted to get a dialogue started here to know what, uh, what I was thinking about this and see. I don't really know how much this would cost. I spoke to Spider Barber briefly to see whether he would be available for this, and he said that he would, and we just talked money, and I had no idea. But I think the next step would be to develop a budget for legal and consultant and, and operating costs, but, um, and then see if it's, if it's worthwhile. But that's, that's one of the things that I'd like to pursue. Mr. Rocker?
Mr. Chairman, as the board liaison suggests that, since the board has to establish a budget for activities of this sort, then, uh, a recommendation from the planning board that the, the village take this up as a project would be entirely in order. I don't know how much effort you would personally wanna put into developing a budget with the resources that you currently have available to. Uh, but it seems to me a more appropriate task for the village board to take on with the rest of the village administration.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I appreciate it.
It's, uh, probably relevant to remember that the Court of Appeals, the property side, whether to accept the appeal within the next month. I'd say by the end of July, we'll know. If they turn down the appeal, then this is final. If they decide to take the appeal, then you go through another year of litigation, and then maybe not, maybe not put it off until the end.
Right. So, and, and, and maybe premature to do any real hard work on this. My idea was obviously to make a recommendation to the village board at some point, but I wanted to make it a little bit more, um, fleshed out, so that everybody would know what we're talking about, what the impact would be on, anything, yes, sir?
Okay, look, I, I just happened to spend time with Dave Klauser today, and, uh, on, uh, return to New Poles, we happened to be discussing this very matter. Dave Klauser has a lot of information.
Right.
In his hip pocket or in his files, and he can tell you what the status of the wetlands up at The Ridge apartments are. We included that very matter in our discussion, as well as the new preserve area where. So if you took those two places, you would find at least a very significant portion of the available, uh, wetlands that have not already been impacted by development. Or that have been impacted by development but are maintained, and Klauser would know.
Yeah.
Everything there is, I think, pretty close to everything there is to develop.
I think that's right, I spoke to him about a month ago about this.
I think you mentioned that you spoke to him.
Yeah.
Could we get copies of the, I mean, I'd love to have a conversation among the planning board about this.
Copies of what?
Uh, like to have us all read the, the law that the town passed.
Sure.
Cause I'm assuming it's not yet on there.
It is online.
Oh, it is online?
It's, oh, it's on the, certain general code.
Okay. You did it.
I saw something on the town.
Okay.
Maybe I did that one side too.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, since it was on the appeal.
Okay, so.
I, I, I don't wanna throw a white blanket on this.
Go ahead, it's a wetland.
But, you know, I mean, every family has a limited amount of energy and a limited amount of resources. And we've got a code load that's in such scandals, it's so difficult to deal with, and there were more and more and more problems with these, the code workings you make. That to start work on anything else but that, I would think would be, you know, that's where our, our time, energy, and money should be spent, is fixing some of those problems.
And I'll take that one step further, cause the other thing that I was, that I had in an email that I never sent, was about, um, working on a comprehensive plan. And we had a process in place to update it joint with the town, and that felt possible. Can you comment on, uh, current steps?
Well, I, I can, uh, say this, that, um, what was in process is now stopped. We, we do not have a process in place. We still have a resolution to do joint planning, however, that was passed by both village and town boards. And we will have, uh, in very near future, a, uh, a joint town and village, uh, boards meeting at which this issue, I believe, will be raised.
Right.
So, the prospect of resuscitating now moribund, uh, processes.
Right.
I think a, a reliable.
Okay.
Why, you forgive the, uh.
Yes.
Waving between line and line.
And, uh, which just, I, I am asking you perhaps more so to have our code fixed. Uh, I've been talking to mayors for, I'd say, five years about this, and it's terrible. I, I know as well as many of us how terrible it is. However, I also think since our comprehensive plan is so out of date, and so would need updating, and since the comprehensive plan should drive the content of the code, um, I don't know that it would take that much longer. Cause if, if we were to put a lot of money and effort into fixing the code, it seems to me, rather than keep tweaking these little pieces, we'd be fine. And then find out, yeah, well, we forgot this is a counterpart, but that part, to, to do it from top to bottom. Yes, this, this one?
It should also be noted that yesterday, we finished a grant application to rewrite the entire code.
Very, good deal.
We'll know in a fall if we can get that money.
And I would, you know, I mean, as much as I would like that to happen, I'd really like to have a comprehensive plan done before that. Because to defend a code that isn't based on, on comprehensive plan is not good.
So how do we get a comprehensive plan?
Well, that's what we're talking about here, that's what.
Well, we can get, we would, uh.
So the two, the village?
Set aside, we set aside a certain amount of money already in two budgets to, uh, pay for a planner to facilitate this. And, uh, the hope was that we would have a draft comprehensive plan for the consideration of both the village and the town within this fiscal year, the one that was written down.
Cause the effort started four, six months ago?
Say five months, at most. Uh, at this point, I could only hope, and through the assault of that, you know, project, that the two boards would say, yes, go ahead, again, go out to bid, hire a new planner, uh, put the effort into it, and try to have a plan in place by the end of this fiscal year, so by next year, and around this time, or soon.
Okay. So, what, the part that I wrote here that I don't really know if it's valid, but, um, because this process has stalled or stopped, um, it adds to our frustration, and, um, and that process did not directly include our planning board or the town's planning board in that work, correct? Yes?
Um, the, uh, original proposal was to have a member of each of the planning boards on the oversight committee. And even though that did not pass both boards, uh, it was always the expectation that there would be very active involvement of both planning boards in the process. And that the, uh, what, what was it called? The, uh, like the citizens group that would be marshaled to, uh, work with a planner in coming up with the, uh, structure of the comprehensive plan, would involve members of both boards. So, both boards were to have been involved. The reason why, uh, the, uh, original idea did not get approval of both boards was that it was, in the opinion of persons on both boards, not minded, that it was too complicated, too many pieces to run, as the emperor said, too many notes. And so people said, let's not do that, let's have a, a much smaller oversight board level. So, always the planning boards were intended to be, uh, critical members of the groups that would be involved in developing.
Okay. So anyhow, that's, that's that piece. And I would welcome any other efforts that we may play a role in to make things better here. I mean, we've spent most of our time here reacting to applications, and I'd like to do more, I'd like to do more things that are. Mr. Zeller?
I mean, last, last time we met, when you were, oh. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Mr. Zeller?
So, with respect to the updating of the comprehensive plan, I, with all due respect to our mayors and to the town and village boards, I'd like to see a radical reorganization in this process. New York State, as well as our local code, recognizes that one of the primary purposes of these boards is to monitor and update the comprehensive plan, correct? And I would like to see this either responsibility of the joint town and village board, planning boards, not the joint town and village boards. I would like the, the town and village boards to, and I won't bring this up as a citizen, if this board agrees, then I would like us to bring it up as a planning board. I would make a recommendation that the town and village boards give this responsibility to the respective planning boards, who will, the chairs can work together to both, um, make sure we have a good RFP, that we understand what our budget and scheduling constraints are, and that it's the planning boards who send out the RFP, that it's the planning boards who take a look at the prospective planners, and that they're the ones who are the focal point for this process. It's been done, it's been in the past, and I think it's a far more effective use of people's talents and resources.
George, what do you think about that?
Well, I think Michael's correct, that, uh, planning boards are intended and have a large role in this, and, and actually the village law and the town will both provide options for you to the village board, town board, or the planning boards initiating the process. If the planning board does not initiate the process, and the town and village board does, then it must come back to the planning board for their review and approval before it gets approved by the town and village board, so.
But that doesn't mean that they're.
The signing board has a major role in this.
Right.
I think the town and village boards have control of the money.
Yeah.
And that's always the major issue, so, but it can work very well.
And I would say that, um, Mike Calamano was the chair of the, of the town planning board, and I worked for a couple of months, uh, back with Kurt to talk about our, uh, processes. And, uh, we found that there was a lot, this was during the time when, what's the correct word for the consolidation work that was done about a year, a half or so?
The governmental efficiency.
That's the one, thank you.
The wall.
It's like protective reactionary strike or something, yeah. So, um, so that was, the purpose of that was to see what common, uh, processes we have, and look at the applications and so on. And it turns out we're not that different, certainly the makeup of the town and village is different, and the needs of the citizens may be different, but for planning purposes, we can work together, we can, we can do this. And Mike and I have a really good relationship, and I think the planning boards would, would do fine working together independently, however it works. And I would, I would like to do something like, yes, sir, Mr. Rocker?
Yeah, I would like to reiterate, cause I already said this, or at least I moved it. I was in favor of having the planning boards have a fundamental structural role in developing the, when I would have voted, or did vote, for that form of the oversight. And I would, more than, uh, I would be happy to support that again.
But, but rather than it being an oversight, should we make a recommendation to have, um, the planning boards be, you know, the lead agencies, or whatever, however you would wanna phrase it, the, the ones who actually initiate the action and drive the process, as opposed to having it driven from the top down?
You know, this is what happened in the village before, uh, past planning boards did this here. And, um, I don't know what the mechanism was, who decided to do it, or how it got paid for, but that's how it was done. And I imagine there are other villages and towns that do the same thing. But, Brad, what's your take on this whole thing?
I, I agree that the planning board should be involved, I think, not just the planning board should be involved, I think it should be a village project. And if the planning board wants to spearhead that, and the board, the village board agrees with that, then great, let's get it done.
Okay, Michael, you have?
Just to clarify your question, comment?
John, yeah, my position is not just that the planning board sits at the table of the oversight committee, but that the joint planning boards are responsible, the lead, take lead responsibility for the project.
Yeah, I, I agree. So how do we do that? Do we, do we make a recommendation? How do we get that started?
If there's a majority of us here, I'd be happy, yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
Well, we can, we can resolve to send something to the village board, and this is what we would like to do, so what, what's it? Any other discussion about that?
No, I agree.
Okay. Um, what form should that take, George? How should we?
Just to do a voice resolution, what you, what Michael just said, I thought would summarize it perfectly. To be, that the planning board should be a, be, the planning board working with the town planning board should jointly be the lead agencies to initiate and, uh, be responsible for the completion of the new comprehensive plan.
I mean, my own position on this is that if you put it that way, you're very likely to stimulate opposition, why do you wanna do that? You wanna say, you have to get money to do this from somebody, you have to get support to do it, unless you have an awful lot of time on your hands, you don't know what to do at that time. I would suggest that you make a recommendation, and that you recommend that the planning boards jointly, uh, have primary responsibility with input from the other boards.
How does that differ from what?
Well, it was, you're, you're gonna do it, and you're gonna tell them now.
We're gonna do it, and you're gonna like it.
A recommendation as opposed to a resolution?
Well, the village board has to approve it in the end.
The village board has to approve it, so why make it such that people are gonna be opposed?
That's fine.
Make it that they'll be partners with you.
That's fine. If your word.
If your wording is, I understand the nuance difference, and I would be happy to...
If semantically it makes a difference, and it would get it passed, then, yeah, that's the way to go.
Well, yes, yeah.
So for purposes of sending something cogent to the village board or to word the resolution, who would like to state that, the way you two just...
So I'll take a stab. The recommend, the village planning board recommends, is recommending that the village and town boards consider the following, that the process of updating the joint master plan for the community of New Poles be that the lead agency handling that responsibility would be the village and town planning boards with input from, well, I'll just leave it at that. Okay?
Okay. May I have a second to have a motion?
Second.
I guess that may further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.